We've got everybody in place. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ava Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Metols?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Shane Ellison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we are thankful for such a beautiful day, for the opportunity to gather and to do the business of the city with your hand and your blessings upon us. Give thanks for all the men and women here today that I've worked with and served with and worked for and just ask that you continue to bless them as you always have, Lord, and just give us wisdom in all that we do going forward. Pray specifically for Councilman Cannon, who's not here today, and just ask that you bless our time together. Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee work session and council meeting that was held November the 12th.
So moved.
Set it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of November the 8th through the 14th and the 15th through the 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation? Proclamation?
I have a proclamation today and I'm gonna let Ms.
Janice?
That's correct. Janice Mecklin.
Mecklin. Read it.
These aren't easy words to say. From the City of Gadsden, Alabama, proclamation, whereas Alpha One Antitrypsin is a protein that is produced by the liver and protects the lungs, and whereas Alpha One Antitrypsin deficiency, known as Alpha One, is an inherited disorder that can lead to liver disease at any age and lungs disease in adults, and whereas, while Alpha One can often be detected by simple blood tests, the disorder often goes undiagnosed, especially among individuals affected by chronic obstructive pulmonary disease as it is misdiagnosed as asthma, and whereas treatment of Alpha One Antitrypsin deficiency, including medication, augmentation therapy, and surgery, is designed to manage and relieve the symptoms associated with the liver and lung disease. Now therefore, Sherman Gotten, our Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, proclamation 2019 adds, Alpha One Awareness Month, and I am the face of Alpha One.
On our agenda, our next item is unfinished business and we have none today. New business. Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have three items. The first is a resolution establishing a special revenue fund for the rebuild Alabama gas tax. I'd like to ask for that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries for unanimous consent today.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
All right. Madam President, I would like to just make one point as relates to that. Part of our requirement under the Act that was signed, Act Number 2019-1-2, also known as the Rebuild Alabama Act, we have a requirement to establish a special revenue fund for these gas taxes that we collect. So the intent there is to make sure that this money doesn't get used for anything else other than our municipal infrastructure, our roads, and for the purposes of rebuilding, complying with this Act. I have one more item that I'd like to ask for consideration under new business today. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3419 to A&amp;S Electrical Contractors for the electrical improvements at the Champions Monument. So a motion to consider today.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. You know, the only thing I'd like to say about this is that when you, you know, when you build monuments, in particular those that come with some level of electrical components, you know, they look pretty going up, but down the road, they require some maintenance. And so this obviously is in line with the maintenance of the Champions Monument.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
And the final item that I have that I'd like to ask for consideration today is a resolution appointing members and reappointing members to the plumbers examining board.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have three. First one, ask for unanimous consent requested by the Finance Department as an authorization awarding equipment to Masters Lease to Region's Bank for a three-year lease purchase of a light rescue truck.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Thank you. I have another one, and it's requested by the Finance Department also. There's appointing and reappointing members of the Land Bank Authority. Ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
And I have one final one, Madam President. This is requested by Fleet Maintenance, asking for the unanimous consent resolution awarding bid number 3416 to McCartney Construction Incorporated for coal plant mix material.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Madam President, I have two. This, the first one comes from, is requested by the city clerk, and this is an ordinance conveying property located at 217 Springdale Road to Kevin Ferguson in the amount of $250. Ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimous vote for consideration today.
Move for adoption. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
And Madam President, the second one that I have is requested by the Mayor's Office. This is a resolution authorizing acquisition of property located at 1403 and 1405 Nakalula Road. Would ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have a resolution from Fleet Management for a zero-turn mower bid to be awarded to Service Star Outdoor. I'm asking for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
All right. Madam President, I have one more from the Mayor's Office. This is a resolution authorizing amendment to the co-development agreement with Cypress Partners to provide for the upfront payment of outside real estate commissions and to end its exclusive representation of the development. Ask for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. It's a resolution awarding NEPA bid 3421 for crushed stone to Vulcan Construction Materials LLC and C.A. Langford Company, Inc., because of plant locations used by Northeast Alabama Purchasing Association. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Now move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing acceptance of lease by Norfolk Southern Railroad, Railroad CSX Transportation, Inc., and Consolidated Rail Corporation. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
And my last, a resolution authorizing acceptance of $500 donation from Judy Dawson. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Move to adopt.
Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I'm trying to get out of here. I still move to adopt. We got it. Listen, this is for our library and the children's department. If anybody'd like to say anything further, that's up to them, but I think this is a good gesture and I think, I would hope more people would follow suit.
Department report?
Oh, we didn't vote.
We had to vote, okay.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Madam President, I'll introduce this one.
This, this is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020 budget to accept $500 from Ms.
Dawson, so I make a motion for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Madam President, if I may, just in line with this, just for those who may be asking, what was that second one for? Anytime we either spend new money or receive new money, you have to amend the budget to receive that money. So most everybody listening and in the room may have already known that, but I always think it's important.
Yeah, I wanted to make that same clarification. I know that was kind of confusing, so anytime we get new money from an outside agency or an individual, the city not only has to pass a resolution agreeing that we're going to accept the money, but we also have to pass a second resolution amending the budget to reflect that money that we receive. So those are technically dealing with the same issue. It's just two different transactions.
Do we have any department reports? We have a citizen request and it's coming from Mr. Craig Scott for the Community Thanksgiving Celebration.
Thank you, Madam President and Council. Kagan Griffin and I are very honored here to be representing the Community Thanksgiving Committee. The committee and many others are hard at work right now over at the venue. And if I'm not mistaken, this event is our largest event over at the venue. So I've been involved with this for the past 11 years and it's quite a blessing for me personally. I am now known as the to-go captain. So meals can be taken out and I make sure that, you know, they're going out the right way. Kagan has been involved in our marketing and promotions and I'd like her to say a few words.
Thank you guys for your donation and for allowing us to use the venue as well. That's first and foremost. We truly appreciate you offering us the building for the entire week and for your donations that you have given us through the past year for Community Thanksgiving and in years past. We would also like to encourage you and ask you this week, tomorrow, we will be there as well as Thursday, to come out. The people in your communities are working with us. Not only do they work Monday through Thursday, they will start before the sun comes up on Thursday to start serving the people. We served almost 7,000 meals last year. Half of those go out Craig's to-go window. We are this year going to start serving every door in the Housing Authority in Edgewell County. We will put a meal in there. For every person on the lease, they will have a meal. And we will also be serving all of the police stations and fire departments this year with to-go meals. So we would love to have each one of you come out. If it's 30 minutes, you come shake a hand, or if it's you come and serve dressing or whatever it may be the day of, come and love on the people. Your people in the community want to see each one of you and we would love to have you also come serve with us as well. We are still taking donations for the rest of the year. This is the first year that I have been involved with Community Thanksgiving in the last seven years that we have been short on funds. And we are still taking donations. We are also taking consideration as far as meals that you would like to have delivered if you know people in your area or family members that need meals delivered to them that day, or if they've never heard about Community Thanksgiving. We would love for you to reach out to us or put it on Channel 99 for the next couple of days for it to be able to go out to those in Gadsden so that they know about it. It's amazing to me every year how many people don't know about Community Thanksgiving. This is our 21st year that we have been doing Community Thanksgiving and the abundance of people that do not know that they can come in and eat for free the day of or that we even exist is still amazing. And we will be at the venue this year, not at the old building that we used to be in. We will be in the new venue and we do appreciate everything that you've done for us this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
10 to 2, correct?
Yes, sir. Sorry. We will serve meals. We start.
Come back to the mic so they can hear you, the people.
This is not my comfort zone.
We will be serving meals from 10 to 2, but we start serving and fixing plates at 8:00 in the morning. We start cooking at 5:00. So if you guys want to come before the sun comes up and start cooking with us at 5:00, we'll take you then too. So we do start cooking at 5:00. Meals start going out about 10:00 a.m.
All right.
Thank you.
Remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed?
Don't have anything. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I will add one thing just because of the opportunity here with the Community Thanksgiving. Number one, such a great event and I encourage everybody to go out and participate in that event one way or another. But just for the community's general knowledge, as some of y'all know, I've been a part of a Feed the Need program that's based out of my business that we've done. Historically, every Thanksgiving, we hand out a box of food that includes a whole turkey or a ham and side dishes. And we are still going to do that this year, but we're going to do it in the week leading up to Christmas as opposed to Thanksgiving this year so that we don't conflict with this great event for the Community Thanksgiving. So I've gotten several calls on that request. Just keep a lookout for more information on that. That will happen prior to Christmas, not prior to Thanksgiving this year. So thank you.
Councilman Back?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to echo on the Community Thanksgiving. It's a, what a wonderful thing that we do in our community. You know, we can look for negative things or positive things in Gadsden and I try to look for positive things as much as possible. That's a real positive thing. There's hundreds and hundreds of volunteers, thousands of dollars, the cities involved. It's just a really, really good thing that we do here in Gadsden and I hope we get a lot of publicity for it, which we normally do, and I hope that it continues in the years to come. So thank you for what you guys do. And also, and I see our friend Craig Scott, I mean, last week, I think, week before last, Craig was up here with Mana. That's another great organization that basically feeds people, elderly people and homebound folks, and that's another positive thing that goes on in our community. So thank you, Craig, for your leadership in both of those organizations. I've had family that's been a recipient of the Mana and it is a wonderful, wonderful ministry and it's a wonderful community gift that people, that volunteers typically give to the City of Gadsden's residents. One year ago today, Bob Echols went to heaven. Bob Echols sat in this chair for 32 years and I know a lot of you remember Bob and know Bob, but I want to make a special disnotation that we remember Bob Echols today and say a prayer for Ms. Betty and their three daughters. Wonderful family, a wonderful public servant. People ask me all the time about taking Bob's place. I quickly tell them, I'm not taking Bob's place because nobody could take Bob Echols' place. I just happen to live in District 4 and I happen to be sitting in this chair, but it's a dawning task. Think about Bob all the time, a great mentor, just a really good gentleman and just a fine fellow. Another fine fellow is Shane Ellison and today Shane lives in District 4, which is my district, lives right down the street from me. And so I'll take a personal privilege to thank Shane for his years of service here at the City of Gadsden. Shane, you're going to be missed. You're not going far, so we know where you are. You're just right up the road, but look real forward to working with you in years to come with the city and the county as we go down this road together of trying to provide the best services for our citizens and to make our county the best county in the state of Alabama. And I know you'll do a lot to make that happen. So don't stray too far from us, okay? Don't forget where we are here. And just real quick, a lot of activity up here, a lot of ordinances passed and things and amendments. City's a big business. We did a lot of business up here today. We just bought some property up across the Nakalula Falls that will be of benefit to the falls, the state's largest tourist attraction, I believe, I heard Councilman Reed say in pre-council meeting. A lot of forward-thinking things happening here. We appointed and reappointed some board members. The Mayor's Office has about, I think, 30-something boards. They're all volunteer boards primarily and that means a lot of you have to serve on those boards and you donate your time. Thank you to those that do that. That's what makes democracy work. That's what makes a city work is you being involved and stepping forward and volunteering and accepting to serve on these boards. There's a lot of work that has to be done. It's a lot of giving of your time. So thank you to those of you that do accept those appointments and that serve on the boards. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy?
Well, thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to say something, Mr. Ellison also. We're going to miss you and we thank you. I know we didn't always agree, but I want to let you know I respect you and you try to do the best you can do. So we're going to miss you and we still, probably still calling to ask you a question or two. But I also want to say thanks to the people that put on the Community Thanksgiving. It's a big hit and you'll be surprised how many people that goes hungry, not just in this city, but this county, and they do come out. So we want to say thank you to them. And I also want to say thank you to the mayor for giving the engineer the go-ahead for the lights on Tuscaloosa Avenue. So we'll be looking forward to the resolution that come from your office pretty soon. So thank you and everybody have a wonderful and blessed Thanksgiving.
Councilman Reed?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just share a couple comments about Shane and we're going to miss you. You know, I do consider this move a great opportunity for you, but a tremendous waste of talent, so we're going to miss having you around here. Shane represents obviously a great story. As many of you know, his father worked for many years as an engineer with the county. So to some degree, he's legacy talent that the county's inheriting. So it's a great story for him. It's also an opportunity for him to stay at home because Shane, as bright as he is, could very easily be working somewhere else and probably making more money, to be quite honest, in a larger market. So we appreciate your level of commitment to the community. Thank you for the open door as you exit because we're going to be using it for sure. And again, as it has been said a few times over, Shane represents a great opportunity for us to collaborate more so even with the county. So he's going to really serve to bridge that divide between, and that gap between the city and the county and, you know, that's going to lead to some great partnerships going forward, we believe. You know, do want to say a special prayer and recognize Councilman Cannon in his absence today. Get better and we look forward to seeing him back here soon with us. Thank you, Councilman Back, for recognizing the anniversary of Mr. Echols' death. You know, as many of you know, that was one of my heroes. So it's always tough to think about him not being here. We were having some conversations here not too long ago and I highlighted my first term term is my favorite term. And, you know, and that, it's for a lot of reasons that I consider that my favorite term, but one of the things I'd like to highlight is I got to sit at Mr. Echols' feet for four years and learn what it meant to be a servant of the community. So, again, do want to send our prayers out to his family, his daughters, and Ms. Betty, and, you know, and let's just take a moment today to remember him and all that he's done for this city. The last thing is the Community Thanksgiving event. You know, that event exists as one of the very notable fruits of collaboration. It shows you what can happen when we set aside differences, whether they be political, personal, or whatever, and come together to support a common cause. So, that event has grown significantly after being started by New Liberty, tabernacle of praise years ago at Donahue Elementary School. It has grown into an amazing event that continues to grow and continues to be a good event for the community. And one final point that I'd like to add, as you walk into that event, those of you that attend, just know that everybody in there is not hungry in that they lack food or lack the opportunity to supply food for themselves. There are a number of people, whether they get their meal delivered or whether they go in for it at the venue, that are just there for the fellowship and the opportunity to be amongst friends. And let's not forget that during this holiday season. There are so many people out there that are just lonely, that don't have the opportunity to interact with family because family's no longer there. You know, I oftentimes think about that because I'm an only child, and, you know, at some point, you know, I may have to look that in the face. So, please consider that as we both support that event and engage people when we attend the event. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. I too want to say something about Bob. When I first qualified to run for mayor, I just knew of him. I didn't know him. And after that part was over where I qualified, he came up to me and said, now, you know, I've always been friends with the other mayor. And I said, yes, sir, I do. And he said, but if you get elected, I'll work with you. And he did. He's a good fellow. He really is missed. Also, would like to say, you know, I've been talking about jobs a lot, and I don't do Facebook and all that. I don't know how to do that. That's way above my brain schedule. But people tell me stuff on there all the time, and I think the best thing to do is most of the time when I'm told about something, the people who posted something on Facebook don't have a clue what really goes on. If you ever really want to know what goes on, call up here, get an appointment. We'll be glad to explain it to you, no matter what it is. And we still have 1,800 to 2,000 jobs open. If you're 18 and older and you're not working, good-paying jobs at all these auto suppliers and other places, then you need to get a job. Parents, it's up to you to make them get out of the house and get a job. Thank you.
Due to the Thanksgiving holidays, Thursday's garbage route will be collected tomorrow, and Friday's pickup will not change. And I would just like to say to Mr. Craig, if you'll tell Mrs. Dawson that she's very appreciated for making that donation because she was the person who...